Recording in progress.
So let's let's get going, Boys and Girls Club. Shalaka.
Shalaka.
Shalaka, thank you.
Appreciate it. Now Abel joining me briefly.
Okay.
Awesome. All right. We had a little something for you all. Maybe you want to remember what came if that one gets back.
Thank you.
Any of you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I know where I am.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one. All right, why don't we give it to these guys as a staff? They can take a look at that sometime.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Awesome. Well, thank you for letting us give you a report on how the Yelm Boys and Girls Club is doing. Shalaka Trevino, the CEO for Boys and Girls Clubs of Thurston County. And back in 2019, the council and the mayor approved for us to use the old city hall building as a place for kids to be club members for Boys and Girls Clubs. And we've had a lot of activity at that location since that time. And I wanted to go through and give you all an update. We have a PowerPoint to share with you, but really an opportunity to let you guys know how much of an impact this has made in the last five years, going on five years as of this September. With me, I would be remiss without introducing the folks that are here behind me. I have Leilani, longtime supporter and former staff member. I have Leah Bradley, area director that covers the Yelm branch. I have our branch director, Emily Sharwarke, and she's a club alumni from Boys and Girls Clubs of Thurston County. And then behind all of them, you have Ariana, who is now a staff member, but was a club parent for four years prior to joining our staff team. And then Abel, a member for going on five years now, so.
Great.
To raise the. Then it's. It's the record, it's three years.
It's rather almost five years.
Uh. Yeah, we're good to go. You can start it up, Kathy. Thank you so much. So Boys and Girls Clubs is, and our mission is to inspire and enable youth to realize their greatness. And when you all said yes in 2019, you all joined us in that mission to make sure that kids had a place both before and after school that was affordable to their parents and gave them an opportunity to be safe in the before and after school hours and summer camp and winter break and all those times that parents are busy doing the things that they need to do to care for their families. And so we started out that year just before COVID, serving close to 100 members. Since that time, we've grown to serve 387 members over the last five years. Of that population, about half of them qualified for fee waiver scholarships, meaning that they're part of the low moderate income demographic. And there was really not a lot for them to access after school in Yelm. And that was part of the council's response was we need to provide more of an opportunity for families who really need it. And so when we're looking at a place to start a club, we're looking for the kids who need us most. And then you'll see on that second kind of pillar, we're looking to provide them five key elements positivity, fun, recognition, opportunities. We have high yield activities, so we have learning activities, social recreation activities. We have a number of programs that I'll talk to you guys about, and we really do want the kids to attend regularly. That's how we know we're making an impact. All of those things combined end up with academic success, good character and citizenship, and healthy lifestyles. We'll go on to that next one, Kathy. So this year, 2023, which you have in front of you, that's our impact report to the community. The Yelm branch had 207 members, which makes up about 15% of our entire county reach. You'll see the other clubs information to the right. But like I said before, nearly 400 kids in the Yelm community have been able to access the Boys and Girls Club programming. For a family that is not LMI qualified, low moderate income qualified, that means that they're paying $50 a year for membership and $150 per month for before and or after school programming. For a family that is on that LMI qualified schedule, they're paying $50 for the year, potentially getting that membership waived because we have partnerships with DCYF and Medicare, and we're able to waive that in many cases. And then they pay $30 per month for the other activities that we offer, the before and the after. If they're McKenney Bento enrolled with the school district, they pay zero. And so making sure that the kids who are most vulnerable have access and that cost is not a barrier is really important. You'll see our demographic makeup at the bottom. Across the county, it's about 51% of our kids that are qualifying for free and reduced lunch, about 35% are from single parent households. And we have a number of different measures that we pay attention to just to make sure that we're really serving the kids who do need us most. We'll go on to the next slide. So I wanted to mention a few of the programs that we've run out here in the Yelm Club. Youth of the Year, which I realize is a common phrase for you guys because I don't, I think a couple of years ago, I saw the Yelm nominated a Youth of the Year out here in the community. We've been running that program for a number of years, and this year was our first year having a Yelm branch Youth of the Year. And so Xander, who's Abel's older brother, is our Yelm branch Youth of the Year. And if you attend the movie Extravaganza that'll take place in June, you'll get a chance to hear from Xander and he'll report out the impact that the club has had in his life. And he also was awarded a $1,500 scholarship as having been part of that program. And he has access to apply for that program again in the future. Typically juniors and seniors take that program to the state competition. And so Xander has the opportunity over the next few years to try and achieve that state competition level, which unlocks some additional benefits for college and post-secondary education scholarships. They work on speech practice, public speaking. He had to perform and create a speech, three minute long speech about the club and obstacles that he's overcome and how the club played a role in that. Kayla's Kids, which it's not super clear on the slide, I apologize for that. But Kayla's Kids is our local mental health support program, and we offer that at all eight of our branches. We have a clinical director and a behavioral support specialist who visit each of our branch locations, one per week, and each of them spends an entire day supporting the kids in that local branch. And so the Yelm Club receives visits as well. And we identify kids who are exhibiting a need behaviorally and who need to be paired up to practice skill building, conflict resolution, generalized pro-social behaviors, things like that. And so it's a grant funded program and was started by one of our former staff member who we lost in 2020, Kayla Rance-Jorgensen. And she spent five years developing the program. And then, like I said, we lost her in 2020, but we'll continue that program in perpetuity in honor of her, but really in honor of the youth that we serve, knowing that after COVID especially, youth need mental health support. And this is a low barrier opportunity for those kids to get that type of support in the club environment while their parents are working or accessing other basic needs. Our Hour is our academic success program, and that is a homework help program. And so the kids earn points or prizes for participating in that program. And the intent really is to give them an opportunity to build academic skills in the club environment. And we incentivize that. We're not opposed to bribing them with pizza parties and club store opportunities for them to start practicing and, you know, developing those skills. Housing insecurity is mentioned. We obviously are an after school program, and we now have before school programming in Yelm. But we do serve a decent number of kids who are classified as McKenney Bento. And so unhoused, they are receiving full scholarship, like I mentioned. But I think it's important to note that for a couple hours every afternoon, those kids get to just be kids. And that's really what the club is intending on providing for all of our members, but especially kids that are dealing with housing insecurity. They carry a different type of burden. And so when they walk through our doors, we want to make sure that they have access to just have fun and be kids and not have to worry about what are really adult issues that are impacting their lives. And then we have a teen center at the Yelm Club. Last year, we were awarded a BCF grant, $100,000, and we were able to do quite a bit of leasehold improvement at the Yelm branch, took down multiple walls. As you know, it was lots of offices, and so sightlines are not perfect previously. But we were able to demo multiple walls, providing better sightlines and expanded space. In that building, we replaced all of the carpeting in each of the different rooms. We were able to put in flooring in our art room that was more conducive to paint and mess and creativity. And then we were able to do some modifications to the door, the front door, to make sure that it's safe for fire entry and exit, and then also that it could be locked during business hours. The high pedestrian area, pedestrian traffic in that space. And so we want to make sure that the kids inside the building are safe. And so that that grant made a huge difference in making sure that we can have the safest, most comfortable program possible. Go on to that next slide. This is a breakdown of kind of how our program is set up across the county. And so you'll see on the left, we have our annual income breakdown. And then you'll see to the right, our annual expenses. Most of our expenses are made up of costs for professional staffing. We do supplement our club programs with volunteers, but the majority of our expenses are related to the staffing that we have in our clubs. We have a branch director, like I mentioned, Emily, who's in that role. And then our annual income is really broken up between events, donations, grants, and then a small percentage is brought in through club fees that we charge families. And so I think it's about 19%. In any given year, it ranges between 19 and 25% that we're actually bringing in because parents make a payment of fees. So not a huge portion of our budget, but definitely part of the picture. And then more than anything, I wanted to say thank you. You all didn't necessarily have a major outside of what we do across the county. Yelm is very special. You all rallied for us when we first opened the branch in 2019. We've never experienced anything like that in any other community. We're very grateful for the partnerships that we have across the county, but it felt different here. And I know you all know that because you live here and you experience it regularly. And then COVID and things changed a bit and I think inhibited our ability to grow at a pace that we were initially anticipating. But we're on the other side of that now, and we're offering before and after school programming, serving about 80 kids a day, which is a big relief to the families that are experiencing that programming. Questions? Yeah?
And I'm just curious, why is Olympia branch so small?
So Olympia Club is located at Jefferson Middle School. And during COVID, that that branch took a pretty big hit as far as what we had access to on that campus. And so for a long time, for the last few years, we've only had the portable that we had access to.
So space, space.
It's a space capacity piece, yeah. We're looking to expand our reach though on the west side of Olympia. Yeah, you bet.
Yeah, something the Bencho that you mentioned, something Bencho.
Oh, McKenney Bento. So yeah, there's a McKenney Bento Act. It's a federal act. It's an unfunded mandate to the school district that different resources are provided to kids who fall under that classification. And one of those pieces is that they, if the district deems that it's most suitable for a student to remain in the district, they provide before and after transportation to and from that child's temporary place of residence, right? And so it's not always the case that it's the most conducive environment for a kid to be in that situation. But when it is, the district is obligated to provide that transportation. We come alongside the district and offer free before and after school programming for kids in that situation.
I have another question. When you mentioned that grant that you got, is that, was that the money that helped you put up the fence for the kids in the back or on the side, the side fence?
No, that was actually out of our regular capital operational dollars. That's where the fencing came from. Yeah. Initially, when the fence was put in, we had a donor of a fencing company who said, we'll do it at cost. We don't actually have to charge you anything, zero cost. And then when we expanded it, our board had made an allocation to be able to expand it, to stretch behind the building and do what you see now.
Someone said that you're changing the front where it faces the street.
Yeah, there was an indication for if we put that black kind of tarping, for lack of, it's like privacy screening, but we actually did apply for the beautification grant. Yeah, to be able to pull the fence off entirely and put black vinyl coated fencing up to be in line with, you know, the code that you all have in place for the city of Yelm.
Thank you. Yeah, it was pretty new that we did that, but I forgot about it. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for your leadership, Shalaka, and thank you for your partnerships for Boys and Girls Club here in Yelm.
I'm lucky to get to do what I do, so thank you so much. We appreciate it.
One more question. So back to that space question on Olympia branch. How is your space here in Yelm? Is it maxed out? Do you still have room?
Yeah. That's a really good question. So we're not quite maxed out, but we're really close. So staffing has definitely been something that we've struggled with post-COVID. We've had a number of positions left vacant trying to fill and make sure that we get the right candidates to work with the kids. And so we're still working through that. But at this point, they're fully staffed at Yelm, and they'll be adding, I think 10 kids was the last I heard. And so we're not quite maxed out, but we will be. My hope, and this isn't in our current strategic plan, so don't hold me to this for next year. But my hope is that we could eventually partner with Yelm schools and do expanded opportunities so that all of the kids in the district who need an after school opportunity have one. And I have a big heart for the teens that are over at the skate park, not the skaters. They're doing skating and doing all the things that skate parks provide. But there's another demographic that hangs out at the skate park, and they need a club. And so I would hope that at some point, we could devote a larger teen space like we've done in North Thurston Public Schools to middle and high schoolers to make sure that those kids have a place of refuge and can make some more positive pro-social choices as opposed to some of the choices they're currently making.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys, for having us. We appreciate it.
All right, HCP, same stuff.
Yeah. Just quickly introduce Confluence. If you guys remember, council, well, we got a grant and council allocated to bring on Confluence to do our HCP, and they've been working on it diligently for a while now. And it's a long process with negotiating with US Fish and Wildlife and Washington State Fish and Wildlife. So they're here today to kind of give you an update to where we're at and where we are heading.
Thank you. I'm joined by Eric and Chris from Confluence Environmental. Eric's gonna join me up here to do part of the presentation, and Chris is our accompanying CEO. Appreciate it, that's great.
Don't know if you guys will love this presentation, but feel free to say.
So welcome to intro. So we just did that. Really delighted to be here. I think I met with council member Kaminsky a couple of years ago when we were just starting the process. We're gonna talk through a little bit about what is an HCP, why this is something that you guys are hearing about, the status of the project, where we are in the process, and what still has to be done. And then some discussion about preliminary conservation program and implementation. That's gonna get down to the costs and durations and things like that. Next. So in developing the HCP, we've put together some different groups and teams. The HCP is fundamentally between the city of Yelm and the US Fish and Wildlife Service. It's gonna be an agreement between those two parties. So those are the two most important parties on that list up there. Confluence is here primarily to provide technical support to you guys and to these guys over here. And then Washington DFW is also providing technical support to us from a regulatory perspective. We've been also engaging with an interested parties group, which is stakeholders that we've been meeting with on a regular basis to get feedback about the process and the ideas that we're putting out there. So those are all the key players in putting together the HCP. Next, please. So fundamentally, what an HCP does is it defines conservation measures for endangered species and their habitats. So you have several endangered species that occur in this area. We have two that we're gonna talk about a lot, the Oregon Vespers Gharro and the Yelm Pocket Gopher. Those are both listed as endangered species that occur in this area, that have habitat in this area, that have the potential to be impacted by activities in this area, whether they're being led by the city of Yelm or more impacted by activities that the city of Yelm has direct control of. So reasons why you want to do an HCP is because it'll simplify federal and local permitting. Right now, if there is the potential to impact an endangered species, it basically creates a stall on a project. So if somebody does a survey and finds one of those species is present or accidentally finds one that's, that's no longer alive or impacts one, that can completely stop a project for not days or weeks, but years. So that process can become a bit of a black hole. It provides, the, the, the part of the purpose for an HCP is it provides agreed to rules to the road. It's basically an agreement, consistency, predictability for everybody. So we get to set the rules now that'll last for the next 30 years, provides predictability to anybody trying to develop in this community, provides predictability to the city for the infrastructure you guys want to develop in this community. So that those can get through the process efficiently and effectively, you're already through the process because we're doing it up in front of the HCP. As long as you follow the rules for the HCP, check that box is done, you can move on. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go forward. Next slide, please. So here's a bit about where we are in the process. So we've, there, there are lots of steps to this. It's a very kind of bureaucratic process where one government agency dealing with another government agency to come to some grand agreement. So we've gone through a pre-planning phase where we identified three key things. One, what species are gonna be part of the HCP? We looked at all the species that might occur here. We boiled it down into the Oregon Vespers Gharro and the Yelm Pocket Gophers. So those are the two species. We think that there's a substantial potential for them to occur here and to be impacted by activities in this, in this area. Then we looked at all the covered activities. So what is going on here that might impact it? Well, we don't have to look at everything. We only have to look at the activities that Yelm has control over. So that's your permitting, permitting activities and, and things that you guys fund, basically. So we'll talk a little bit more detail about what those covered activities are in a minute, but we've, we've identified what we think are gonna be the covered activities. And then the last period, last thing we need to do is say, well, where is this gonna apply? And so we call that the plan area. So the plan area is gonna be not just the city limits, but also the urban growth area for the city of Yelm, so that we accommodate potential growth over the next 30 years. And then the term is 30 years, and that's kind of dictated to us by the Fish and Wildlife Service. That's as long as they're willing to really think about. So it used to be when HCPs first came out, some people said, we're gonna do a 100 year one. And the Fish and Wildlife Service is really gun shy to those nowadays. So they really like 30 years is about as long as you can get. You can do shorter ones. Some people do 10 years, but 30 years is, is about as long as we can get. So the next, next phase is what we're just wrapping up with the HCP development is the impact analysis. What are the potential impacts? What's impacted? Where is it impacted? How much habitat's impacted? We'll show some details about that. And then we need to develop a conservation program, which is essentially like mitigation. How are we gonna offset these impacts? Because as part of the HCP, we need to show how we'll fully offset the impacts of these endangered species. These species are already so impacted that they're endangered, so we need to show that we're not doing any further impacts. The conservation program does that. Our plan is gonna be mainly focused on development of a conservation area, and Eric will talk a little bit more detail about that in a little bit. But there's some key bits to that where we're gonna have program administration, the development or acquisition of conservation lands, and monitoring and management of those lands over time. Ultimately, that's gonna cost money. That's gonna require some, some agreements. So that's the implementation of the conservation plan at the bottom there. So we'll go through this in a little bit more detail. Slide. So here are the covered activities or some of the description of what, what makes up a covered activity. It needs to be something that's initiated by the city or that requires a city issued permit, a decision that the city makes. So they gotta be under your direct control or authority. You can say no or yes, you're making a decision. Has to occur in that permit area that we just described, the city limits where the urban growth area occurs during the term, the 30 year term, has a reasonable likelihood to impact the species, and the impacts are foreseeable. We can, we can make a reasonable guess as to what they're gonna be. If we're gonna build a new super mall in an area that's currently got gophers, maybe we're gonna lose those gophers. That's, that's reasonably foreseeable. Next slide. So these are the, this is kind of the list of activities and a little more detail of what we've, we've proposed covering. So there's permit you guys issue for private residential, commercial, and industrial construction. Those would all be covered by this HCP. There's also municipal capital projects, schools, roads, bike trails, sidewalk projects, utility systems, both power lines and internet, even phone towers, things like that. Your water and stormwater system, and then the kind of the residential connections for sewer extensions, repairs and connections. Those are all permits that you guys approve. Those would be part of the HCP. So your permit test, those approvals, that process would all go through the HCP for, for endangered species act compliance. And then there are things that just you guys do for operations and maintenance. There's parks and open space management, mowing, installing fences, maybe developing new park facilities. And then ultimately, because it's gonna have to have a conservation offset, there's gonna be a conservation lands management part of this. That will be new, that will be part of the offset. So there'll be site restoration and enhancement, maintenance of that site, access and control. That doesn't mean that the city necessarily needs to do that, but you need to have control over who's doing that. It could be a partner, a nonprofit organization, could be the county that ultimately does that land management, but you guys will have some sort of agreement with that party to, that they're doing it. So that's what that means. So here are some activities that do happen around here that are not gonna be part of the HCP because they don't need it. They already have protection, they're already covered. There's a specific part of the Endangered Species Act called the 4D rule, and it covers these things. These are mainly minor activities or regular activities, fences, gardens, weed control, minor construction, agriculture activities, roadside maintenance, fence repair, things like that. So we highlighted that one at the bottom because that's one of the activities that we know the city does quite a bit. Next slide. Also, we're not gonna cover anything that's outside of Yelm's boundaries, direct control or permitting authority. So this is not gonna cover stuff way out in the county. If they have a Yelm address and they're outside of the city limits, it's not part of our HCP. Thurston County has an HCP, they can go to them to talk about how to pursue that. If it's currently in the UGA and in the county, when it becomes part of the city, when you choose to annex it, it'll become part of the city's HCP. As long as it's part of the county, it's part of the county's HCP. Thurston County has HCP already, and it covers those, those, those parcels and areas. Next slide.
Right, real quick on that. Are those two rules the same though? They're same in the UGA. The city rules and Thurston County rules are gonna be the same?
They're very similar at this point. There's gonna be some coordination between the city and the county, and there may be developers who want to do their activity before a site gets annexed or they want to do it after. What we've identified is that conservation is gonna be the same. So the, the benefit that they're doing is the same, the cost is gonna be very similar for those parties. But it will be a little bit of a transition between the two, and that'll be a really decision that happens when the city chooses to annex the site or not.
I have a quick question, but I know we're doing questions. I'll read. So the exemption.
That's a lot of information, so I think asking a few questions.
The exempted, the exempted activities. I would imagine they're not required for any mitigation. So then zero mitigation required for HCP with the exempt, okay. Right. Gotcha.
So this is kind of an overview of the, the big picture schedule of where we are and where we're going. So we did an HCP planning phase where we kind of scoped it, figured out what, what we need to do, collected some information. Then we've been developing the draft HCP. This is a lengthy document that we've been sharing with the Fish and Wildlife Service, the federal agency, representatives from them and, and DFW. So they've seen several of these chapters and given us feedback on it. We actually had a meeting with them last week, I think, and got some confirmation that we're on track for probably late this summer or early, you know, this fall to have what's called a complete draft or an administrative draft HCP. It's kind of confusing terminology because we, we have drafts and drafts, but ultimately when we have, when they agree that it's a final draft, it'll go out for public review, which is that formal review process. So they need to get a public review of their decision to issue a permit associated with the HCP. And that's what the NEPA/SEPA is. So that's an environmental analysis or an environmental impact statement, which will review the effects of issuing an HCP. which will review the effects of issuing an HCP of, of allowing this form of development. We think it's a good thing. We think that we're proposing the best form of mitigation you could do. This is way better than anything else. We think it's streamlining permitting. We think it's an improvement for, for the regulated community. We think it's a benefit for the species because we're going to concentrate the, the best habitat in, in, in one place rather than having patches that gradually get fragmented over time and become unusable by those species, um, causing them to gradually get, get worse and worse conditions. Um, so that's what's going to happen. At the end of that environmental analysis, we go back and we finalize the HCP. We could, there could be somebody who comes up with a great idea we didn't think about. And that could cause us to slightly change the, the habitat conservation plan. Uh, but at the end, we'll send a final HCP and you guys will get what's called an incidental take permit. That's the official permit. The HCP is more like that. Plan that you follow. And we'll move on to implementation after the recorded decision. And for the next thirty years, you guys will have that, that tool to use. It'll be flexible. If you need to modify it, there are ways to do it, but it'll also give you assurances that the rules won't change. They won't, they won't get modified on you unless there's a really good reason to. That's, that's, that's part of what's built into this. It's called no surprises. That means that they're not allowed to just change the rules on you when you have a habitat conservation.
Phil, can you just mention, um, who the final approval authority is and then who within that entity reviews the HCP?
Oh, I think the final approval, well, the final approval authority comes from the Fish and Wildlife Service. They're the ones who are issuing the, the final document. The HCP is your document. So the city of Yale will be the ones who, who say, yeah, we're ready to implement this. The Fish Wildlife Service, they issue an incidental take permit, which is their companion. So there's no reason to have an HCP unless you're getting that.
I told you it would be really funny.
I guess though, I was wondering how, kind of getting at the attorneys.
Yeah, so, um, there are several levels of legal review that happened for the Fish Wildlife Service. So, um, in, in this page right here, the Fish Wildlife Service will have their region staff reviewing and they'll have their attorney or solicitor review of the documentation. So they're making sure that their liability is protected. That's also a good opportunity for the applicant to often have their, uh, legal attorneys review the HCP as well.
Yes, Phil. You intrigued me when you said the word streamlining permitting. Um, is that you, the part of the NEPA CEPA? I mean, is that the way, help me understand that a little bit.
No, so the streamlining right now, if somebody, uh, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you have a developer who's got a project and he's got gophers on his property. He's basically stuck.
Yeah.
There's nowhere for him to go. If he can try to put something in the, in the process, but he's at the back of the queue and he's not going to be a priority ever. Uh, because they're going to be more focused on, on bigger projects or, you know, really recognizing that cities and communities are developing these streamlining tools to, to set the rules of the road. Um, so the county's done it. Uh, Tom Waters is doing it, wants to do it, get through it. Um, the, the base has got a similar kind of process that they're trying to work through as well. Um, so really what it does and it says, if you do X and Y and Z, you're good. Now, one of those things is often a, a payment or a mitigation action. Um, so there is, there is some, uh, fee or some, uh, uh, that, that can be a, that can be a difficult pill for some people to swallow, but it, it creates that certainty though. And instead of just going to the services and saying, I want to do this and service saying, we can't tell you if you can or can't, but uh, we got a process and it's going to take at least a year to get through it.
So a lot of times there's that fee that comes with some kind of a land study. And so is that, you know, how long does that last? You pay the fee, they do the observation. How long does that last?
So for, uh, for the HCP process, it'll be a, it'll be kind of a one-time fee. And, and you'll pay that fee and now those lands will be accounted for as, as developed.
Right.
And you'll, that transfer will go into kind of a conservation bank, a mitigation bank that you'll use to build a mitigation site to offset those impacts.
So once you pay that fee, it kind of solidifies everything. Money goes towards mitigation, then you can move forward. Just trying to learn.
Yeah.
You say this for thirty years.
Yeah.
Is there, what could cause a hiccup that, you know, all of a sudden like a, a different species or something happens that we all of a sudden have to redo the HCP prior to the thirty year? Cause you know, things happen. Just kind of curious on what will?
So a species could go extinct. Uh, not a good outcome, but that could mean you want to get a species removed from your HCP. You want to remove those, those, those requirements. A new species could be listed. If that happens, you want to amend your HCP to add that species in the conservation measures it requires to your HCP. Um, so those are two of the, the main things. The third is really around new science. And that's part of where you've got assurances when you have an HCP. So if somebody says, oh, we didn't know that the yellow pocket gopher really likes, you know, a specific type of hay that only occurs in one part of the, the area and now we do, and we really want to just prioritize that. You can take that into account, but you, you, you have a no surprises agreement, basically saying, we did a hard look at the science with the services when we developed this and this was the best understanding we had at that time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So to understand a little bit more, the HCP is our plan. Um, so your guys' job really is to help us stay up to date with maybe the US Fish and Wildlife?
Well, really what we're doing is we're trying to give you a plan that the Fish Wildlife Service says, yes, this checks all the boxes and you don't need, you don't need to do anything else.
So as long as our HCP is up to date, then we can implement streamlined permits as long as we got the right boxes checked.
Exactly. That's why we want this.
That's cool. That makes sense.
Yeah. Next slide. All right. So Eric's going to come up here in just a second, but we're going to walk through some of the preliminary impact calculations. What we think the conservation program is going to look like and how implementation and funding might look like. So might be some big numbers, might be some scary numbers. We'll see. Next slide. Um, so kind of using some funny terms of art, one of them is called take. That's just another way of saying impacts to a listed species. It can be, uh, chasing a, a, a listed species or harming them. It could be killing it. So take can be that whole spectrum is take.
And damaging their habitat.
And damage to habitat counts as well. Right. Um, so we're going to be talking about projected take to the covered species. And like I said, the covered species, that's the pocket gopher and the Vesper Sparrow. We're going to mainly be talking about acres of habitat. So we don't have very good mapping of where these species actually occur here. We know they do occur. But we have a much better sense of where their habitat is. Um, that's kind of defined by soils and, and vegetation. So we have a much better sense of where that is. Those don't move around, animals do. Um, we're going to walk through some mitigation program cost assumptions. Kind of how much it's going to cost break or how much credits might cost to get, so credits are the offsets, the mitigation. Uh, a, a user might pay and then we'll have some preliminary cost lessons next slide. Um, so I'm going to let Eric take off from here.
All right. Thanks, Phil. Uh, it occurred to me, we're, as consultants, we love acronyms. So, um, it occurred to me that we might have not mentioned what habitat or HCP stands for. Does anybody know? Oh, you got it right. Excellent. Um, so yes, as Phil was saying, part of the process of developing an HCP is to go through the exercise of estimating take. And as, as Phil said, take can be either the number of individual animals. That's really hard to keep track of. Uh, and you know, there's a gopher. I didn't see a gopher. Uh, but acres of their habitat is something that we can wrap our heads around and it's useful for, if you're trying to issue a permit and you're the city, you don't have to keep track of how many individual gophers might be there, might not be there. How many acres of habitat are we talking about? And so, uh, and then that's also easier for the Fish and Wildlife Service to wrap their heads around and understand the impacts that they're going to permit to occur under the HCP. So everything's on the table. We all know what's going to happen. Uh, we have a process for moving forward efficiently. Uh, so the, the area on the map here that's outlined in black is what we're calling, uh, the plan area as we know it so far. So the plan area in an HCP covers the area where permitted activities are going to occur. That plan area is going to be expanded to include the conservation land system once we know where that is and we don't yet. Um, that's still in the future. What you see in purple on there is our best estimate of what the remaining yellow pocket gopher habitat looks like within the city.
We can't build there.
Oh, well, right now that would be complicated. Uh, so the city could issue a permit for that, but if a concerned party gets involved, they could say like, hey, you have not accounted for take of listed species that could be there, um, breaks on, you know? That's a lot of purple. Yes.
So right now, it, we might be able to build there because all we're doing is looking at habitat. But what we do is we require people to do a gopher survey by a certified, a US Fish and Wildlife certified person. And if there are no gophers there, then you can go ahead. But if there are gophers, how do you?
Correct.
And they have to be done in the sun during the gopher.
Yeah, and they have to be done between June first and October thirtieth of the year. There are a bunch of little, you know?
Yeah.
And gophers and people all agree that Yale's a great place to live.
The outlined area, that is Yale city limits as well as the urban growth area?
That is correct. Yes.
You mentioned, you mentioned that's where they could be?
That is where they could be. So that's an analysis of habitat that doesn't factor in surveys um, that haven't been conducted yet.
But do you have any idea how much there actually is? There could be one, there could be a hundred, there could be a thousand?
Uh, no. Uh, we have a decent idea for estimating based on the kinds of soils that are present. Uh, because these critters prefer specific types of soils and they use them at different densities. That varies a lot. Um, without getting into the, you know, we're, we're biologists, so we'll nerd out pretty quickly if you let us. But you know, the short answer is that our analysis of take is based on the habitat potential that's there due to the types of soils that are present, the types of vegetation that could have been there historically when this was all native prairie. And those are the kinds of habitats that those gophers lived on that is now, you know, shrinking and getting carved into pieces. And that's why they are where they are and they're, they're, um, now listed under the ESA. So, um, this area in purple is for yellow pocket gopher. The Oregon Vesper Sparrow, they were also a prairie species. So they like the same kinds of habitat for the most part. It's almost a perfect overlap with the, the gopher habitat. If you could just tap.
Is there any restrictions now in regards to sparrow? I mean, I never heard of it. So.
Well, so it's a good question. I.
I heard of the gopher, you know, and people complain about the gopher in the building, but I haven't heard anything about the sparrow.
Well, they're shy little critters and to clarify something that Phil said, so, um, in, in fact, the Vesper Sparrow isn't listed yet. But it's highly likely that it will be over the next thirty years during the life of the HCP. And so we included that species because we don't want you all to get caught short. Exactly. Surprise. There are, there were several other species that we considered, but ultimately decided not to include them because they're for a variety of reasons. It would just add complexity and uncertainty. We might not be able to get this thing done. Uh, it might be difficult to evaluate, you know, in permitting, you know, are these species there? Are they not? Is the habitat there or not? Uh, so we went through a lengthy exercise with, uh, with the partnering agencies to make good decisions about which species to include. And so those are the two that we really focused on. Yes, ma'am.
To the mayor's point, if we don't know how many gophers there are, how do we actually know they're endangered?
Uh, well, that is a question that's outside the scope here. And there, there used to be a lot more than they are and smarter people than me have spent a lot of time looking at and working on this issue over many years. Uh, you know, yellow and pocket gopher are part of the larger group called the Mizzoma pocket gopher. And they used to be much more widespread in this region, but they're, were called prairie dependent species. So the native Puget Sound prairie that used to be a lot more prevalent around here is, you know, it's down to the last 10% or less of what was historically present. And wherever that prairie habitat disappears, these species disappear along with it. So that's one of the ways that we get there to that knowledge. And then where people have looked and they do, do these studies and keep track, they see declining trends in abundance over time and those are the people that work on this stuff.
Like over to Pierce County when we know that?
Uh, well, you know, gophers don't swim that well, so they're not going to cross the Nisqually. Um, they're also not very good at crossing roads. Yeah, again, outside the scope of the meeting, but you know, yeah, I mean, it's a good, it's a good question. Um, I guess the, without diving into the nerdery like I'm prone to, uh, a lot of people have given a lot of thought to and a lot of careful consideration for the species status. And as a federal agency, the Fish and Wildlife Service really has to demonstrate that listing is warranted. Uh, and that is a lengthy process that also takes years. So, um, the from our view, the listing is justified, whether, you know, there's debatability or not, it's happened, it's the law. And so the HCP is the best mechanism to provide you with certainty going forward.
Background there. So US Fish and Wildlife Service, you know, does that stat, once it's petitioned for listing, the service will do a status review where they do their best estimate of populations in that geographic range that they're prevalent. And then we'll either determine its listing is warranted or not. In this case, it, it was warranted. So there are larger population estimates as far as it goes for the, the population as a whole that's listed, but it's not specifically per se in that area. And, and they also reassess it every, they're required to do five years status reviews for each species that's listed. So they also continue their reevaluating populations. They have ongoing service.
Trying to give you a hard time. Has it gone up or down?
We can take it.
You see in those five, every five years, has it gone up or down?
I think that they're still trying to come to a full understanding of the status. I think that they consider it stable at this point, but at risk of going down further uh, is, is what I've seen. Uh, they've been encouraging, uh, basically prairie restoration is the best strategy to. What, what they've most recently come out with is a recovery plan, which Eric will talk about in a, in a.
In reference to the species that you chose not to include. Those are going to all some become a surprise. Uh, example of that is, uh, when I was living in San Antonio, there all of a sudden became this blind salamander that it was because a particular river started drying up and they started, somebody found them. We, we're not going to have any issues like that with any of the species that you chose not to include.
Well, so there, there's a, there's a legitimate concern there. Um, you know, western bumblebee is a good example. Um, they're probably going to be listed in the next thirty years. They're large, they've disappeared from an extensive part of their range here in, in the Western US and a kind of alarming way for all kinds of reasons. For the most part, the species that we considered are also what we call these prairie dependent group. So the benefit is that it wouldn't take as much effort to adjust the HCP to consider okay, we're going to lose more potential prairie habitat. Could that have been habitat for these species? And more importantly, the conservation land system that you set aside is going to focus on providing that restored rehabilitated prairie habitat that is functional for gophers, it's functional for sparrows, and it can be functional for these other species as well. Uh, with the, you know, the right kind of adjustment and planning. So flexibility has been kind of built in mind here.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was listening, Phil, you said, uh, there's a five, every five years is a status update, right? And then when we do like a land observation for the pocket gopher, that's like a three-year time period. We're like, yeah, I thought I heard something about you do the study, then you got to wait three years just to see. Is that?
The study lasts for three years. So what you.
Valid for three years.
So the study's valid for three years and then there's a five year update status. So if we timed those, well, right, right. I would say, but so that, that makes sense because you want the status to be longer than, than the others. So I just wanted to verify that.
The two are really going to play together, uh, in a practical way. Cause those three years of surveys are really to say like, are we sure there are gophers here or are we sure they're not here? Kind of thing. And that's to develop a, a property, a parcel. And that, that kind of level of, um, verification would change under the HCP because now a process has been set up in place to streamline, you know, it would include, we're. Because now a process has been set up in place to streamline, you know, it would include, we're still working on. The the practical pieces of implementation and what the Fish and Wildlife Service will expect. But you know, you'll do a survey, it'll confirm gophers are there, but the idea is to streamline. So you don't have to wait three years to move ahead with development because you've done advanced mitigation. For the impacts that are going to occur. I'll get to that in a second here. Um, next slide, please. And so, um, you know, about thirteen hundred and fifty acres in that pink zone. Our purple zone, not all of that is really effective habitat. So we go through kind of a process of making assumptions about. Um, you you know, how much of that habitat is actually usable? We work with the Fish and Wildlife Service to make sure they agree. And we come up and we've also done diligent work to evaluate. How much development is going to occur within that area in purple over the next thirty years? And so that involves a deep dive into the comprehensive planning work that that Gary and his colleagues have done. Uh, as well as the work done by the Thurston Regional Planning Council. Uh, it's helping the city to game out the development responsibilities under the Growth Management Act over roughly that same period of time. So those planning documents in that thirty year timeframe for the HCP are all kind of dovetailing together nicely. A long way around the barn to, uh, we've come up with an estimate of about eight hundred and fifty or sixty acres. Of development, different categories of development, uh, of relative impact that we're calling it that will occur in that area and pink. In what we think can be habitat. So this is the number that has to be mitigated for. And that can go up or down a little bit. We're still working with the Fish and Wildlife Service. They want to check our, check our homework and make sure that they agree with what we're saying. Could go up or down by ten percent, but that's about the right ballpark. Of that total, about um, sixty percent. Is private development, so that'd be residential, um, commercial and industrial. Um, and of that total, about two thirds is within the city and a third is within the urban growth area. Uh, municipal development, about two hundred and thirty acres. Uh, again, um, most in the city, but a portion uh, will occur in the UGA with future annexation. Uh, and then there's uh, municipal M and O, there's acronyms again, maintenance and operations. Uh, for things like parks maintenance and um, initially we had included. A hundred and twenty eight acres of things like roadway management, vegetation mowing, things like that. But um, working with the Fish and Wildlife Service and including in the HCP some best management practices to make sure that. Your maintenance aligns with the four D rule, we can take that hundred and twenty eight acres off the table. So um, that will not not fall under the management responsibilities going forward. Next slide, please. Uh, so to develop the conservation land system, so this is where we would do the mitigation for the HCP. Our intent was to align with the Fish and Wildlife Service's recovery plan. Uh, for, and they only have a recovery plan for the gopher because the sparrows aren't listed yet. And this recovery plan breaks down the range of the species into different blocks. One of those is called the YPG East, Yellin Pocket Gopher East. Uh, and that's the area outlined in red here on the map. And uh, the green that you see on the map are gopher soils. Those are the kinds of soils that those gophers really love and prefer. And that's how we know where they either are or where they're most likely to be based on the quality of those soils and what's on top of them. And then, uh, if you could just give that a tap real quick. Uh, the areas that we're pointing out with the arrows there surrounded and uh, or outlined in purple and pink. Are what the the recovery plan calls reserve priority areas. So this is where the services looked and said, okay, these are the areas. With the best soils, we know gophers are there. These are the highest priority spots for conservation of the species. Give that another tap, please. And uh, if you look at those two and then tap again, we'll zoom in, we know where this is. This is right in the city. And historically, this was Yellin Prairie, the most important spot for gophers. And it's a focus area of the recovery plan and these areas are considered essential for recovery of the species. This creates some complexity because the Fish and Wildlife Service kind of recognizes, they already know like, gosh, this is inside the city. Uh, underneath the footprint of developments is already there. Uh, it's carved up by roads and pipelines and and other things. So our ability to achieve recovery using these spaces is challenging. And this is something that we're focusing on in the HCP. To really get us to practical solutions and put you all in the best uh, position for success. Uh, next slide, please.
Can I just pause there for a second? So I wanted to highlight that orange and red areas on that slide, uh, partially because of the mayor's question. So um, those are all areas where where gophers have been observed. And those are all reported by one entity. That that's basically washed out efforts to find a mitigation site for the young bypass. Uh, so that's the areas that they went looking and found gophers. And so that just gives you some indication of of uh, some of the types of areas, but these are. It's just one entity that went looking for gophers and they were looking at specific size, they were looking for twenty acre parcels. And raw gopher soils and that that's where they found them.
Did the addition of sparrows add to the total acreage?
Um, marginally, marginally.
Under a hundred acres?
Oh, like, yeah.
Say it was twelve acres, yeah.
Yeah, twelve, twenty, something like that. I think in total of, you know, there's eight hundred and fifty seven acres of gopher habitat and. Uh, six hundred some odd acres of potential sparrow habitat. And of that, only uh, I think twelve acres of sparrow habitat was outside of the footprint of the gopher, potential gopher habitat.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions for you before we. And aside, what is, what's, uh, do you guys study the effects of cohabitation? Of, you know, because we have species inside city limits that live and we collaborate with, you know, like coyotes, bolliegulls. Deer, etc. All seen all the time in the city, honeybees, et cetera, et cetera. You know, are the gophers getting their own special special land just themselves or are we looking at collaboration where you have land? You know, the whole land's not being covered with pavement, of course, you know, very rarely with a whole parcel. So you have land that, you know, like you have some yard or garden or this is natural area. Is that being considered in that?
Um, y- yes, in short, um, and the, you know, the next slide can help us look like, look at that. Uh, you know, so gophers are funny in that they um, can persist. In habitats that are being developed for long periods of time. But um, you know, just by virtue of how they live. Uh, you know, they they evolve, they grew up in, you know, big open prairies where they could spread out. And um, young could get out of their nests and disperse and move to other places. And they find each other when they want to mate. Otherwise, they don't like each other very much. They're kind of cranky and territorial. Uh, and so, you know, the short answer is yes, they can live with people provided you're not, you know, digging their their. Um, burrows up or cutting away all the vegetation that they need to eat for a period of time. But eventually, if they can't disperse, if the young can't get out and spread to new habitats. Or they can't find mates because they have to cross a road and they get run over by a car. Or their neighborhood cats and dogs that are picking them off when they're on the move. Uh, over time, they just, they wink out. So those little patches and pockets will will disappear over time and. Uh, so the, you know, the concepts of what is a conservation land system look like? Uh, are, you know, bigger connected, uh, big chunks of habitat are are best. You can do a patchwork quilt provided you have enough good connectivity between them. And by connectivity, we mean open spaces that have compatible land uses. So the gophers can move across these patches and find each other. And from the city's point of view, and we agree, uh, a big connected plot is best for a variety of reasons. It's easier than a bunch of little purchases, that's hard. And then it's easier to manage than a bunch of little disconnected pieces. Uh, so that's the kind of preference, but you know, we have to adjust to what kind of purchase opportunities are available. And that's an important point, you know, we're buying these lands on the open market. We're not going to force anybody to sell or you're not. Um, that's not what an HCP allows and that's not the desire here. It's finding willing sellers with the right kind of property uh, that want to contribute to conservation or willing to sell. And that's uh, that's how we'll get there.
Yeah, uh, second question, sorry. Uh, yeah, regards to that too. So you keep saying, you know, um, the prairie land, so. Have forestry destroyed the prairie land? If you look at, yeah, we see a lot of fir trees, well, how many, how much fir trees do we have back? Today, when it was a prairie compared to now and is forestry destroy, like actually working against?
Well.
Prairie environment and.
That's a great.
That being considered.
It's a great question. So one of the reasons that prairie habitat has disappeared is it used to be maintained by burning. And without that historical practice in place, um, trees have encroached. So a lot of prairie habitat has disappeared because trees have grown on it. And now forestry happens and um. Yeah, with, I don't want to dive into too much complexity here because if you let me, I'll do it. And no, I don't think anybody wants that.
Yeah, dude, but I'm on the right track, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think the upshot is that we owe in the vegetation and the trees start encroaching, it isn't gopher habitat anymore. And so the the places that they can live have have slowly but surely shrunk over time. And squeezed down into these little pockets that are getting increasingly carved up. And and that's how you end up losing them. And that's, you know, that's part of what's gone into the whole status review and how we understand how they're doing and how they're not doing. And so that guides also our thinking about how we want to conserve what's left and set up a mitigation program that will work for everybody. Uh, so, um, you know, this cartoon is just kind of concepts that get to exactly what I just talked about. And you know, we can do the patchwork quilt, but ideally bigger is better. Um, consistent with the recovery plan. Um, you know, if you have great soils that can support gophers at high density, two hundred and fifty acres of mitigation. Um, might be enough. Um, if they're less suitable soils, maybe five hundred acres. All with the goal of creating a permanently protected block of habitat. That can support at least a thousand reproductive adults over over uh, the life of the HCP. That's consistent with the goals of the recovery plan for this YPG East service area that we talked about. And that's what we're trying to set up here to uh, get fish and wildlife support for the HCP. And demonstrate to them that this HCP won't preclude recovery of the species. Again, kind of getting into the the nerdy language, but this is the the legalese that the uh, the Fish and Wildlife Services. Lawyers will be looking at as well as others, you know, people who are concerned about the species and and uh, Fish and Wildlife Services gets sued too. Right? So they have to make sure that their plan passes muster and is is well supported. Uh, next, next slide.
We'll get a copy of the slideshow. That's I didn't have to. I know some of your blazing notes. I don't want you to write down every piece of information.
Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so, um. You know, looking at those concepts, and if you just hit uh, another tap here, what does five hundred acres look like? Kind of like that, you know, if we just do the big block. And I think, you know, everyone agrees that, uh, and that. Kind of captures those RPAs, those important areas that the Fish and Wildlife Service identified. But you know, realistically, that's the city. There's stuff already built there. Uh, and you know, a a full block of habitat isn't attainable, a patchwork quilt would be really hard. Um, you tap again, I get fancy with my animations, so. You know, that's no good for a variety of reasons. And this is what, you know, we're working with the Fish and Wildlife Service to reach agreement on. Uh, next tap two, same kind of thing. You can move it around inside the city. It's going to be really hard to create a system that achieves biological objectives. And allows enough development to proceed to meet the city's needs and comply with your responsibilities under the Growth Management Act. So this doesn't work, uh, but what might work next. Next slide is um, a system, conservation land system that partially overlaps the city and these RPAs. Um, and incorporates important habitats that are just outside or next tab. Uh, maybe a little further afield. And so we've set up the H HCP to allow for flexibility. And you know, these are going to be purchases of opportunities. So you know, the first big purchase of conservation lands is going to focus on areas that make the most sense. And then we build around it and um, we'll go where the opportunities best present. But the the key thing here is to give flexibility and um, provide a path that allows you to move forward with some certainty. Uh, next, please. Uh, so how much will it cost? Uh, so we gained this out looking at, um, you know, per acre cost estimated in twenty twenty five and. About five hundred and fifty acres of uh, of a big patch of conservation land with some additional buffer around it. Uh, and assuming that that gets acquired over the next twenty five years in blocks, that comes out to about eleven point six million. And then those lands also have to be maintained uh, for their conservation values, so to provide the habitat functions that you need. Uh, over that whole period. So what does that mean? It's like mowing, maybe prescribed burning. Uh, you know, vegetation control to get the right kinds of plants there, keep the weeds and the invasive species out. And uh, access controls so people aren't four wheeling through the middle of the gopher habitat in the middle of the night, um, things like that. Uh, and you know, going off of our best estimate of what per acre costs look like, that that rolls out to. About five point two million over the life of the HCP. That'll start slow. About fifty thousand dollars per year, uh, with the first tranche of conservation lands that you acquire. And then as you acquire more over time, obviously the cost will will expand to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year. At uh, at the end of the HCP term. Next slide, please. Uh, a key concept and the Fish and Wildlife Service has emphasized this many times is uh. You can't pay as you go. You have to mitigate in advance of the impacts that are going to occur. So in practice, what this means for the city is that uh, at the start of the HCP, you'll want to kickstart the conservation lands program. With a purchase, an initial purchase of conservation lands. So assuming that um, you buy a hundred and ten acres, twenty percent of the projected five hundred and fifty. Magnificent purchase would be two point two million. Uh, and then stretching the rest of the purchases out over the next twenty five years. Um, you know, those are two point three, two point four million, but if you you annualize those costs, they'd be. First ones for over ten years, about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars per year, um, up to. Four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars per year for blocks of land that are purchased each five years. Um, and again, looking at the totals here, the total land costs, eleven point six million for acquisition. And then the management costs increasing per year over those five year blocks. Uh, to about five point two million total over the life of the HCP.
Can I make a summary there, Eric?
Yes, sir.
Um, I just want to say that this this slide is the one that, the one I raises the most concern for me. Because just based on what we've been seeing happen with Tom Water. Uh, who are developing an HCP, the biggest problem they have or one of the biggest problems is the getting off the ground piece. So in other words, it's so important for us to get that initial uh, land to conserve. Because if we don't, then the approval of the HCP is going to drag out and they've been going for years, so.
Beyond that, just to augment that, you you can acquire the conservation lands anytime. They can be acquired before the HCP is in effect, and then the lands can be identified as falling under the HCP after the HCP comes in effect. You have to wait until there's an HCP to buy those lands.
Yeah, so this isn't prescriptive. This was just, um, you know, one scenario that you could follow through. To give you all an idea of what the costs look like and how they might unfold over time. It's it's not the roadmap. You don't have to follow.
And just real quick, Tom Water also applied for capital budget money in this year's capital budget for the state and they were awarded that.
Yeah, we're we're going to cover the, how do you pay for it here in just a second, but it's two. Yeah, uh, quick point note, so seventeen point eight million total plus some additional money to cover fifteen percent. We're estimating to cover administrative costs for the city, you know, for staff to issue permits and and track the HCP and ensure compliance and things like that. Yes, sir.
Are you going to provide a list of parcels that are, that we would want to acquire?
Uh, so that that would fall under implementation. That's not going to be part of the HCP. Um, you know, we can provide some, our, our, yeah, we can provide some insights.
So I I can, I can address this. So uh, you guys, along with Fish and Wildlife Service, applied for a grant to help with the implementation. To do field surveys, to do, to identify lands that likely have gophers. Um, the the reason why you don't include that information. Um, the, the reason why you don't include that information in HCP is HCP is a public document. Anybody can get that. Uh, so we'll be creating a separate sort of confidential report you guys will have that identifies priorities. As well as working with some other partners, Thurston County, as well as local land trusts. Uh, to try to identify whether or not any of those parcel owners are interested in selling, or maybe in the near-term future. As well as to unders, you know, kind of gauge their interest and willingness to, to sell. Because as Eric mentioned, this will all be a, a. A fee simple voluntary transaction at market.
Yeah, you're not going to be on your own to um, run with the ball here. When this is done, there will be some.
We have a few steps to go to get there, but we'll, we'll have, we'll have some priority looks, science.
Um, and it's just referring back to the map that showed the two areas.
Yeah, those reserve priority areas, yes.
Um, the colorization that I was looking at there. Is it possible that if like with JBLM being nearby, as well as with Nisqually and Thurston County? That if they already, if it's land that they own or can't, how do we go about co-purchasing? So that we can, you know, not necessarily have within the city limits, which it appears almost everything is city limits. But we're able to get towards actual, you know, already.
Coordination with the city and uh, the JBLM through their, the Army's Compatible Use Buffer Program. Is going to be, you know, part of our, part of this planning that Phil's talking about. To work with, you know, we, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We want to work with the efforts that are already in place. Uh, because it benefits everybody. It streamlines the process for you, and it provides the most benefit for the species too. To, to concentrate these conservation lands and these efforts together. So um, the pieces will, will work.
And so like you, for us, we need to acquire five hundred and fifty acres. And if JBLM, let's say they have to acquire five hundred acres, we actually have to acquire a total of a thousand and fifty. Is that correct?
Everybody that has a mitigation responsibility has to meet that. So yes, that, that. Yeah, no double dipping, yeah. Folks, folks would be wise to that. Uh, next slide, please.
Oh, wait, sorry, I have a question.
Yes.
Would conservation lease work in a, in a case like this?
Um, are you thinking of a conservation?
Some conservation easement, yeah.
Um, easements are possibilities. Um, so easements can be used. And um, the Thurston County HCP uses uh, easements on agricultural lands. To allow for what they're calling compatible uses. But those lands don't necessarily count towards the mitigation offset. Um, you can use, like, if you think back to that cartoon I showed, the patchwork quilt where you had the dark green and the light green. Uh, the light green that connects all those little reserve satellites together can be, could be um, implemented through conservation easements. On uh, you know, agricultural lands, for example, that are being managed for pasture hay or livestock. That allow for gopher dispersal, but they, they're being managed for multiple uses. They're not being managed exclusively for the benefit of the species. It's lands that are managed exclusively for the, for the species that count as mitigation. Uh, the other lands that, that connect and make it functional, uh, don't count against that total. But are considered from the Fish and Wildlife, by the Fish and Wildlife Service when they give the thumbs up like, yes, we think this is going to work.
Thing I'm thinking of is the uh, Nisqually Land Trust. They own so much land along.
It all depends on the uses that are allowed from the conservation lease. So um, it, it's hard to give a blanket answer to your question. Um, there are definitely instances where a conservation lease lands may be what's done. And as, as you pointed out, there can be lands that are managed by the Nisqually Land Trust that, that Yell.
Because they don't use them for anything. They're just vacant.
So you need to have institutional control over it though. So um, that's, there may be some opportunities there, but there, it, it's not a fantasy. I guess that's the point I think.
So we have met with Nisqually Land Trust about this, and we've met with the county, and we've met with the representative from JBLM. There's a variety of different ways and partnerships that we're looking at. Some might be, maybe we buy the property and this, the land trust does all the monitoring and management. Or, you know, various ways to do it. So we're definitely exploring.
Okay, so we don't have to actually own it. It can be.
Uh, that's right. You don't necessarily, but you do have to have control over it. Um, institutional control, and that can be through like a memorandum of understanding where you've worked with the group to purchase the land. And then you have an agreement with them that they manage.
Something like that, too.
Yeah, it's kind of like that. Uh, so looking at the sources of funding, uh, and, you know, we've been doing the homework behind the scenes here. To make sure that the numbers all kind of balance out. Uh, and um, the distribution of, of funding for that seventeen point eight million plus fifteen percent. Which adds up to about twenty million dollars, uh, give or take. Um. About sixty-two, uh, this is, this is divided up funny. So basically overall, we, we think that this.
I mean, yeah, so this assumes that there's some funding that comes from the state through capital appropriations. Uh, so this is basically the capital appropriation that the Tamil are got. If they provide, say, two million dollars, that would be about ten percent of the total budget. And the county also has a conservation features program currently in their HCP. They allotted about two point three million dollars towards activities in this general area. If we're able to get about the same amount of money from the conservation features program to go towards uh, the Yell HCP and the U.S. construction. These two would end up being about four million dollars.
For eighty percent of that total. Keep that in mind here.
Yeah, so the proportion of impacts right now is about thirty-eight percent is identified as, you know, kind of city. Or municipal responsible activities. Some of those are, are going to be roads, other things that are, are, are passers. Um, or uh, utilities. So there's utility fees as well way that those, those get, could get paid. Um, so if the water system requires you to, to incur some costs, that can become part of the, the water system's overall cost. It could be capital project costs. Uh, the school requires construction on a site that maybe has filming right now. We get rolled into that and the funding for that capital project would drive it. And then the last one's, you know, program costs, which is your general, general capital program costs. Then the other category is the permits. So the private permits, we currently identify about sixty-two percent of the. Impacts to the covered species are coming from, from permits. And that's likely to be development fees that are tacked onto the permit. Um, and, and we've identified that as a, as a cost break.
Yeah, so like, you know, upshot for talking about twenty million on total. And the city is responsible for eighty percent of those mitigation costs. That's about sixteen million that would come through permit fees. So that's a, a fee for the conservation program that's attached uh, to permits issued for development on a per acre basis. So that's per acre of that relative impact number that we're talking about. Uh, and then the city also, through their municipal development activities and MNO. Uh, would be responsible for um, those acres of impact at the same rate. And those, those uh, impacts could be charged through utility fees or uh, transportation levies, mechanisms like that. Uh, and we can go to the next slide, please. Uh, it's a little busy here, but um, hopefully we stare at it a little bit and you'll appreciate the, how the numbers are breaking out. Um, so the proposed mitigation fee, uh, and this aligns with what Thurston did in their HCP. Is about nineteen thousand dollars per acre of relative impact. Um, so not every acre is um, eh, you know. If you have a parcel and it's two acres, the actual relative impact on that parcel might be, you know, a little over one acre. So you're not paying eighteen thousand dollars per acre. It's eighteen thousand dollars per the amount of habitat relative impact. On that parcel. Uh, so keep that in mind. Uh, and applying that fee to the acres of impact falling under each category of development. That we're projecting over the next thirty years. Uh, that breaks out in total to about sixteen million. When you combine that with uh, the two million dollars from the state, the million dollars projected, not guaranteed yet. But that's what we're projecting as a funding source from uh, Thurston County. Uh, that about, that, that starts the pencil out. So as uh. As a point in the process that we're working through with the Fish and Wildlife Service to demonstrate that we have a mechanism. To meet these conservation needs, the, the numbers are balancing so far. Um, how does this break out? Um, based on how we see development unfolding over the next thirty years. Uh, and again, there's a lot of work that's gone on behind the scenes, looking at the county's planning doc, or the city's planning documents. Thurston Regional Council Planning Doc, or Regional Planning, uh, losing my terms here, uh, Planning Documents. Uh, that projects out to around three hundred thousand dollars per year in permit fees. Uh, that would go to the conservation program for private developers. And then a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for Yell capital projects. Uh, and then the, the maintenance and operations about, you know, sixty-three, sixty-five thousand dollars per year. Um, we've taken out the uh, those hundred and twenty-eight acres we mentioned uh, for transportation. MNO that are covered under the four D rule. Um, provided that the city agrees to follow the certain kinds of best management practices. That comply with that rule, those acres of impact don't need to be mitigated for. Uh, so that's uh, I think that wraps things up. I am, and the raise back to Phil here for closing. Next, next slide, please. We can talk about next steps and where we're headed.
Yeah. It's obviously a very simple process. Really, really appreciate you guys' patience staying with us throughout the whole uh, presentation. Um, so next steps, we need to finish working with the services to finalize the draft HCP. And get their buy-in to that process. Um, all the numbers that Eric presented, they might have shown a lot of significant digits. And uh, those are probably going to change a little bit before you guys see a final document. Uh, and we, we have gotten some feedback from them. The, you know, numbers might go up. Well, some of these are somewhat rosy projections. There could be situations where things get a little bit worse than this as far as, as quantities. Next steps for us, I mentioned that we're um. Pursuit, where we have a grant proposal with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, you guys do actually. Um, for an implementation uh, grant. If we get that, we should know late this summer, early fall, that, that, that is awarded. Uh, we think there's a really good chance for, we're one of the most competitive chances from Washington that got some of that kind of aggregates at the state level to cement it there. That will really uh, pave the way for updating the permit process, for working with your permit team to integrate. Uh, any of the HCP processes and your permitting processes. Um, continuing to work with partners to identify opportunities to buy and manage lands. Uh, as Gary mentioned, he's been doing a lot of work to talk to people about opportunities. We've talked with, with Thurston County. They, they've already got a realtor who's, who's kind of gently looking for opportunities in the area, uh, which is great. Uh, if an opportunity comes up, it would be great to be able to have funding in place to, to make something happen. Um, ultimately, there's going to be a bit of process though. This, 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 that environmental impact. So we got to finish the HCP. And then we've got to evaluate it. That'll take about a year. And then it's going to be getting that, that process up and running, which hopefully we'll be sitting here talking about a year from now. You know, hey, we're ready to get this going. We've got this great new permitting program that Gary's going to be talking about at that point. And uh, hopefully we'll, we'll have that process in place, have some videos so that, you know, the permitted community, the. The people you guys work with every day are calling you guys to ask, what's this HCP thing? You can say, hey, just look at that video. We've got our website. Uh, I should bet you guys already have a website that's got some of this information on it. Um, we've been putting information on there for about a year and a half now. Uh, so there's, there's some information starting to get out there. Got some community feedback from that processes. So really appreciate your time. You guys have had some great questions and go ahead.
Uh, second that. Thank you all for the engaged questions. Really, really appreciate it.
What the HCP plan, when it's finalized and all, it's gonna follow plus the acreage. But it's also going to tell us the best way to mitigate it in the sense of managing it, uh, these, this kind of uh, plant. These are the, what you can do to help condition the soil or bring the pH level to whatever it needs to be and things like that, correct?
One last question. The nineteen thousand acre, is that this for wherever is developed on that? So if say R sixteen or thirty-two, they can spread that out over those many units. And that's what I'm saying. So it's nineteen, you say about almost nineteen thousand acre.
Yeah.
Um, so if it's R sixteen.
Are you choosing the dollar box of?
Yeah. Unit. But they, the developer would spread the cost out.
It won't be so correct. It won't be different by different zoning, uh, uh, you know.
Right, yeah. So an, an R thirty-two would be more beneficial because they can spread the cost out more than that R four.
If, if you guys directed us to, to make that sort of difference, we're just looking at as habitat for habitat. Um, so the, the, the amount of habitat that's on those areas is going to be affected by um, somebody developing it, it, as they choose.
Right. Um, in reference to helping developers out. If uh, a land that they are going to develop happens to be right next to what we've already said is the conservation mitigation land. And they're actually going, they say they will set off a certain amount of property. Will there be a formula that we can go, okay, you're going to set that off, you're going to, you know, fence it off or whatever it might be to add to?
They want to contribute conservation lands. I think that that would be, you know, they would get direct credit for those contributions.
As I said, just want to make sure.
Yeah, we, we, we hadn't talked about that explicitly, that, that scenario you just called out, but um. Uh, I, I can envision scenarios where a developer might own multiple parcels. They might say, hey. I have this parcel I haven't been able to develop, and it's got gophers on it. Do you want it? Because I want to develop this other area, um, that there, that there might be opportunities. And, and some of your developers may have already run into those situations. Thanks. Really, really appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Um, those guys know where to find us. If you have more questions, as we mentioned, the presentation should be available to you afterwards, hopefully. Um, I feel free to reach out if you have any further questions. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you. That's Sonia. Thank you for being patient.
It's interesting to hear other stuff then, for it really.
Like, so it's up all the time, yeah.
So um, I'm here to talk to you regarding our jail contract. Uh, the service, the new jail services agreement is going to come before you next Tuesday. For uh, hopefully approval and allow judge, um, judge, the mayor to sign the agreement. Um, as you know, we, the city of Young has contracted with the Nisqually Jail Tribe for about twenty years now. Um, and this is to house our misdemeanor offenders. Um, the contract actually did expire December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. But there was an extension that was signed earlier this year. Um, that goes through April twenty-second, so just another week or two. And that is, that was to allow us to, you know, continue negotiations, conversations. And making sure that our city attorney would review the agreement as well and that everything was good to go. Um. See, so really I just want to highlight the uh, the changes uh, that you're going to see on this agreement next Tuesday. Um, I did not have a, I don't have a copy of it for you right now, but it is going to be included in your packet. Uh, but I'm happy to also email it to you tomorrow, um, if you wish, and you want to start reviewing that. Um, and if you have any questions about it, you know, feel free to email me with any questions, concerns before next Tuesday, preferably. That would be awesome. But really just um, the changes is obviously there's always increases, right? And, and everything we do in life, but um, so our current bed. Uh, daily ra, bed rate is a hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. With this new agreement, it is going to go up to a hundred and thirty-five dollars um, per bed, per day. So you are looking, we're looking at thirty dollars more of an increase. Um, and then every year it's going to go up based on the CPI adjustment. Um. And that's one of the things that changed this year uh, for this new agreement. The only other thing that really increased uh, change was the tribe is actually will be offering. Uh, their own jail officers to transport um, our inmates to the courtroom if needed. Um, I don't think we would really ever need that. That would probably be in case uh, that our soon video, audio arrangements. Are not working at that time, and maybe we have to have an officer actually transport the inmates to the courtroom. Uh, if that was to happen and we needed that, they would be a seventy dollar per hour per officer. Uh, uh, cost to us, to the city. Um, they did remove their twenty-dollar booking. So in the past, in the past agreements we've had, there was the daily bed rate plus twenty dollar booking per, um, inmate. Uh, they are no longer doing the twenty dollar, dollar booking. So, I mean, like I mentioned, it's thirty dollars of an increase with this new agreement. So it's kind of gonna offset that since they're removing the twenty dollar booking. These, um. In the past, we've had three secure jail beds. This new agreement is really unlimited jail beds. Uh, at this time, um. Like I mentioned, the agreement has been reviewed by both the city attorney and the attorney for the tribe as well. Um. So I also did wanna share with you that I did do some comparisons with our other local jails before coming here tonight. And so I did a comparison with, of rates with the Thurston County Jail. Uh, our costs, if we were to contract with them, would be a hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, per bed a day and, uh. There's, that is not an option right now anyway, so they would not contract with us. There are capacity and, uh, but I just wanted to give out that number to you. Since they are one of the nearest jails that we have. Um.
So it's only really going up ten dollars, right?
Right. You can set up, yeah. And then also I did reach out to the Chehalis Tribe Jail. Um. Their rate is, is significantly lower than even this quality jail. It would be ninety-five dollars that it, that. That does include a twenty dollar booking fee. Uh, but while it is cheaper. Uh, if we were to contract with them, it's, they only have a capacity of up to seventy inmates, so it's obviously not even. Sometimes they, I mean, it, it's possible that they would not have space availability for us if we were to show up, but then with a person. And then you also have to, um. Uh, take into consideration the transport of our officers. To the Shale's Trail. Well, I don't know really what the distance is and then the time pulling them out of our. Of the roads to go all the way to Shale's Trail, um, jail. So, but I did wanna provide you with that information so that you have that.
And Sonia, are we looking into as, Chehalis as a backup for us?
Yes, yes. Thank you for mentioning that, um, mayor. So yes, we're looking into maybe having them as a backup just for like an emergency situation. If for some reason, um, this quality jail is not able to take our inmates, um. I don't foresee that happening, but they would be a backup option that we can make the drive, you know, and house them there. Um, let's see, County Jail, I mentioned, you know, they are, they are five hundred capacity, the County Jail, but again, right now they're not an option for us either way. Um. Not too much I have for you right now. I don't know if you have any questions? Yes.
And, you know, maybe by next Tuesday, we're, um, can you give some stats of? Uh, how many people we've had in this quality of this past contract, what the, uh, foreseeable future is? You know, what estimates are.
Yeah, so thank you for.
Stuff like that, you know, that kind of data.
Yes. So we did, I, I do have just our twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, numbers. We are averaging three to five beds per day. Um, and, uh, for twenty twenty-three, we had a total of four hundred and eighty-five bookings. Um. Our current budget or budgeted for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four was a hundred and, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. In twenty twenty-three, we did spend a hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred of that. And as to date for twenty twenty-four, we are at thirty-five thousand spent. Um. Since we're entering this agreement before our twenty twenty-four budget ends, I. Based on the numbers, um, I think we're, we'll be just fine. It, it's hard for me to give you an exact number of bookings. And, you know, it can vary depending on, I guess, how well they're behaving out there, but, um, I'm. Confident that we can, uh, we'll be okay with the rest of the year and the budget that we have. And then obviously, as we start the conversations for the new, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, we're gonna revisit that. I'm pretty sure it's gonna increase, um, in costs since everything's increasing. Um, the reason also for the increase in this agreement is, you know, their medical costs, additional staffing, things like that, so.
Um, and what's the average stay of?
You know, so it can vary, um, because, well, Judge Meyer has done, uh. Has kept some people in bail. Uh, the amount of days they stay after that, it can vary. They can post bail that same day. Um, or they can stay there until the next court date. So it can vary anywhere from three days if they were booked for a weekend, let's say. To up to even two weeks, which is, we only have court every other, to, uh, every other Thursday. So it just varies. Um, at the time of sentencing though, and that's just at the initial booking until they see the judge. Uh, once they get sentenced, depending on the crime, it can vary from ten days to even a year. Depending on the situation. But, um, yes, again, this, this, uh, the agreement is gonna be included in your packet to make sure. You can please read it. Have any questions, reach out to me and I will be before you again next Tuesday for approval. Any other questions? Yes.
Three years or five years?
It's a five-year, I believe, right? It's a five-year.
You have the ability to get out of it, however, with a notice, I think sixty-day or ninety-day.
I think it's ninety-day notice.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, they're moving on up. Old chance this stuff. I don't got one of those fancy things.
We'll get you one.
Hey, I was saying, we'll get you one. Don't you worry.
On it right now.
True, I was like, yeah.
So thanks for meeting with us. We're gonna talk to you today about the Flock system that we're looking into, working on that project now. I have a slide show right here or PowerPoint. We do it this way because it gives you some better understanding, I think, of how the system works. Um. Flock has become a nationwide phenomenon for everybody. Um, it's. Become increasingly more popular in, um, our areas between King County all the way down to, um, past Thurston County, I think. Centurion, everybody else is already on the program. Currently in our area, just for reference, uh, Thurston County is, um, purchasing cameras, um, tub water. Lacey's the only department that is in the middle of trying to figure out if they want to or not. Olympia's already doing it. And pretty much Lakewood, everybody up to high five orders using these cameras. So I'm giving you that reference. So it'll make sense as we talk about how some of the system works a little bit. Um, you can go to the next slide. The purpose of, uh, work block for them is to eliminate crime and shape a safer future. Um. That's their slogan, uh, for us. So, so I have the next one. So why we're gonna use Flock is. Flock is with the current reality with limited police resources, crime is on the rise and trust is needed more than. Uh, ever with the way that the society is viewing police. Um. With this opportunity, technology multiplies our force. It gives us the ability to, um, have eyes in places that we can't currently. Um, it captures, uh. And distributes objective evidence to the right user, which we can't tell it. To give us any special information. It only gives what the system gives. So it's not gonna. Profile any type of, uh, person or any kind of vehicle. And I'll explain that a little later too. And it encourages community to support and grow. The cool thing about this system is. Local businesses, community, you can go to the next slide. They can actually purchase a camera through the Flock system also that can be integrated into our system. So that we can have access to it for any kind of, you know, if they have a high theft area, um, or. It started originally with, um, homeowners associations where people were coming in and stealing and, uh, harassing citizens. So this is, that's who created this as a, somebody, the homeowners association president, basically. So they can integrate those cameras and they can purchase them on their own, which is nice for us because that just saves costs on, uh, anything for the city. Um, so moving forward, that is an option, uh. As we progress into this program.
And if they will, those sort of businesses, they will be that camera or would they be restricted?
Well, I think they only would have access to their camera and I gotta get more clarification, but nobody else can do it. And we would only get the actual hits if they were given it to us for like, if it was for stolen vehicles and things like that. So I don't know that they would actually get the images because. They're giving out information for like, if it's a stolen vehicle or things like that. We would be able to access it if somebody was coming in stills, like let's say a pallet of lumber. If they had this system. On an investigative standpoint, we could go into the system with that case number and we could review the footage and pinpoint the vehicle. So I don't believe they have access to do that. They just have access to purchase the camera. So we have access to, you know, basically support their business. More or less how I believe that situation works. I have to get a little more clarification on that.
Thank you.
Um. The thing with Flock is, uh, it's infrastructure-free. Um, it reduces time and value and utility costs. So basically the system gets up to a pole. Um, as you saw on that other slide, that was the actual camera. It's a little camera. It has a, um, solar panel on top and it just clamps on to a pole. It does not run off any power, so we don't have to connect any power to the, um, PSE or the city. We don't have to run, uh, electricity or anything to it. It's fully self-contained. It's twenty-four seven coverage, um, and it gives us real-time alerts. So. The thing I really like about Flock is it's not so much just about. Stopping people installing vehicles and finding stolen cars. It gives you access to the Amber Alert System, Silver Alert System. Um, you can make custom lists. So if we have people coming in the city that are prolific, um. Thieves that are stealing stuff from citizens constantly, we know kind of what, who they are. We can pinpoint their, that vehicle if we're looking for them. But the Amber Alert thing is, is huge and it's actually solved a lot of, uh, kidnapping situations across the coast now. Uh, and there's some, we have some evidence of that in the back. But once that system gets in there, if that car drives by any camera, it immediately alerts everybody that has access to it. So it's not so much just for catching people installing cars and baggers. It also has a, you know, a, a huge public safety factor to it.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand, cause learning more of what you're saying compared to what I've heard before. So then the camp, cause before it said there had to be a case number or warrant to be able to even start looking at the photos. Now you're saying that it can give you real time.
So there's, so if there's something in the system that's been put in by NCIC, there's a case number associated to that. Where the case number would come in from us is our officers would not have the ability to just go in and look at photos. They would have to have a reason to look at a photo for, to search a certain vehicle or a certain timeframe in the system. So if a business was burglarized at eight o'clock in the morning, that. Uh, citizen would make a report. We'd follow through. We'd do the pa, the paperwork. They would use that case number then to be able to search that timeframe to see if we can locate a possible suspect vehicle.
But for the real-time alert, because I was also told that there was no AI associated with it, it was human beings looking at it. It's AI utilized to say license plate pops up and that's the license plate. And what is the reliability on the make and model of the vehicle?
So, uh, they use a, uh, vehicle, uh, fingerprint identification module. It's the most sophisticated module system out now. Flock system can not only give you the plate number like this right here and APLR's, uh, automated. License plate readers have been out for a long time and they're currently working. We currently have one now that we drive around and it reads the place and it gives you the information. What Flock has done has been able to make it where e- even at night, they can use the dimensions of the vehicle, the, um. Brake lights, the taillights and give you and I give you a make and model of that vehicle. So there's an AI associated probably in their back in their algorithm. And it will have to, the only way we're gonna get that information though, is if we have a case number. To recall and we're looking for a specific vehicle. So if I looked up that vehicle at night, for example, it was leaving the area. The Flock system would give me what their algorithm says that vehicle is, what kind of vehicle it is. But that would only be for me looking into the system. If it can read the plate and the vehicle was stolen, it would immediately alert the system. So if officers are allowed in, they would then know there's a stolen vehicle in this area and they would go to the. I mean, where does that answer?
Thank you, thank you for the explanation.
Um, the ethical, ethically made part of this is. There's no facial recognition. The vehicle, it's not used for traffic enforcement and, um. It's indiscriminate evidence. So it basically doesn't discriminate like I said earlier. It just gives you what the, what it is. It's this vehicle. Doesn't tell you who's driving the car. It can't recognize them. It can't tell you anything about the person. It literally takes a picture of the vehicle. And that's it. It's not video. Um, there's no audio. It's just a quick snapshot. So we got, we got into that. So what it is, is the license plate recognition. Um, it gathers objective evidence and facts about vehicles, not people. Alerts police have wanted vehicles used to solve crime and adheres to all state laws. So as you know, there's different laws in the state of Washington that there are in, you know, California and so on and so on. So the system, we will only get the information on the vehicles that were allowed to by law, by state law. It's not facial, facial recognition. It's not tied to personal identifiable information, which is, it's not gonna tell you if you, they were on your plate that you. Um, have a warrant. It would tell us that you have a warrant if somebody put it in the system saying this person was wanted for murder, for example. And they would say this vehicle person is associated with this vehicle and this plate. That's how that would get in the system, but if they had just a warrant, they're not, it's just not gonna pop up that, hey, just go.
It could tell you the owner of the vehicle though, right? Like say if somebody stole, hey, they stole my car. Hey, I found your car. It's over here.
Yeah, well, cause when they run the plate, we'll come back with a stolen hit through the state. Yeah, so yeah, it will tell us that information. Um. It's not used for traffic enforcement, so we can't use it for anything. You can't send somebody a ticket for, you know, having a tab or it doesn't show speeding or nothing like that. So you say, if you're, you're good. And the data is only stored for thirty days. So they had, um. They've set this for thirty days for an automatic delete based on best practices and they see, um, all the different lawyers, everything are not involved. They've determined that this is the best practice to keep it where it deletes after thirty days. So nothing we will keep is stored any longer than that. Once, once thirty days goes by, if you drove by it, your car gets deleted out of the system. And that's only if we're, we wanna search it, right? So it's not, if it goes, if it shows up stolen, let's say twenty-nine days later. We're not gonna get a random alert saying, hey, twenty days ago, this car came through here. What we would get is if we're searching for somebody that we needed to know what was, somebody we're trying to find a vehicle, we would search and we have thirty days to find that vehicle. So if we found out about the crime sixty days later, we wouldn't see it. Um. How does this technology prevent and eliminate crime? Well, it's proactive, gives you the real-time alerts, which we've been talking about. The investigative part is huge because the clearance rates increase and crime rates decrease. The amount of, uh, crimes that have been able to be solved with Flock. Is instrumental in solving things that it's taking much longer to do because you don't have a suspect vehicle. You don't have. Any information on somebody that's fleeing the area. A prime example is the situation that we've had out here on Morris Road. You know, they, they sent a video out looking for this vehicle, right? If that, if we had a Flock system on Morris Road, we would have been able to get an actual shot of that vehicle and a plate on that vehicle. And that amount of time. So drastically reduces the amount of investigation time and also puts you forward to the right path a lot faster. We're not putting him out there. That's accounting, just. That's, okay, so mitigating risk. The footage is owned by us and the city. Um, it does not get sold or shared by Flock. They can't, it doesn't go anywhere. Um, has a thirty-day retention, like we said. Um, and that's where it shows the short retention, uh, period ensures that all the data not associated with the crime is automatically deleted or unrecovered. So once it's deleted, you can't get it again. So that's the point of that. Um, it takes human bias out of crime solving by detecting objective data and detecting events that are objectively easily. Um, stolen vehicles, kidnappings, uh, and some non-legal things like an amber or silver. Or not like a silver alert, you know, you see them all over. So we'll give us those informations too. Um, all the data stored securely in the AWS, which actually stands for Amazon. Web Services, that's who they use through this. Um. Search reason is required for an audit trail. So we have to, they have to tell us. So officers that go in and search for this investigation standpoint or to search for anything in there have to have a case number and it's audited. So officers that go in and search for this investigation standpoint or to search for anything in there have to have a case number and it's audited. So there will always be a tracking, just like in our systems now, if we run vehicles. Um, we know that they were in vehicles. If there's a discrepancy, we can go and pull an audit trail and find out why they were running the vehicle. So it doesn't give anybody access just to search anybody and find out if their friend drove through town. There's no facial recognition. Again, they really hit on that because obviously everybody's worried about the big brother aspect. That's. A concern and it always comes up in all the conversations with Flock. So there's zero facial recognition, no P I I. And no predictive policing, um not used for traffic enforcement. We can go in. The other thing they don't do is it's not connected to registration data or third-party databases. So. The only time you'll get that information that you were talking about, sir, is that if there's. A stolen hit and it's in the system because then we get the actual N C I C hit, so it tells us who the owner is. Um, and the transparency report, that's an optional thing, but we will probably use that. The awesome thing about Fox that gives us, they will actually uh design a website for us and they already have like a pre-made one that. Puts this information out there. So it tells people, citizens, and we can put it out on our like, when shares our Facebook where we have our traffic stops and stuff. They can share how many flock hits we had. How many stolen vehicles are recovered, how many investigations it helped in. Uh, we could use that to that for the public to see, you know, and. All full transparency, what's happening on a daily basis with the system. It does not give any personal information, just the data of this many hits, this many things. And that's the, that's the uh example of the website right there. That they would be able to go into and click on and see little things. And then you can also go on and pull reports and put them out like on your Facebooks and the city pages just to show people how it's working. So this is the part where I said it was, we'll talk about some of the crimes that solved. Uh, you can go to the next one. So these are the cities that already use it. There is actually way more already. Just in the time that this has come up. Um, the time that I started looking at Flock, I was, it was brought to my attention by uh Edenville P D that has it. Um, and then I had a meeting and it was Centroy, I think you said, right? Well, so who has he sent right? They had, I talked to their chief. Um, within that short amount of time, we've, they've probably added ten agencies in this area. So this is kind of a timeline and there's, there's timelines in here, but this is a um uh homicide suspect. Ironically, the guy in the middle is one of my neighbors and a friend of mine. And this did actually, the flock system helped them track this murder suspect and take him into custody uh rather quickly. So. They put it in the system, it popped up and they found him in Seattle, I believe is where they ended up finding him. Uh, he'd left on the highway. So Yakima is one of the biggest, uh, that's like their poster child for the flock system right now because the Yak, when Yakima. Found out about Flock, they were um, they had a lot of stuff happening in the city. There, there was a lot of violence, a lot of shootings, a lot of all kinds of stuff that they were having a very hard time managing. They've implemented the flock system as you see in twenty twenty-two and since that time, and this is a little bit old data, they've had. All these homicides and robberies, this, this all been solved. By just using the flock system. They have a really great system. Where it's gunshot detection. We won't need that here, but in Yakima, in certain areas, they have a a gunshot detection. If somebody, if they hear what is a gunshot, the cameras immediately start recording. Um, in that area, so they have a different feature that we don't have. Because they had so many drive-by shootings that they weren't able to keep up and it solved massive amounts of drive-by shootings for them. Because they were able to get an immediate video of what was going on and figure out the vehicle leaving the area. Um, so.
So is that just in the, the year of twenty twenty-two?
That's, that's from now till I think the mid twenty-three or something like that, I think they said.
All those numbers right there.
Yeah, that's within a year, basically. So this is just some examples of how Spokane uses it. They put some on the local hiking trail. Uh, they were having some assaults on the trail. And in the area, so they were, they used the camera to get vehicles that were coming in and out to try to locate a suspect um with the. Authorities and they were able to do that using this flock system and then he was charged. So other than having somebody other than seeing the vehicle personally. This system allowed them to do the investigative side where they could search each car that came in and out during that timeframe and pinpoint them. And arrow them down. And then at that point, they can go talk to individuals. So this is where we were talking about the silver alert. This is where I think the system is even better. Um, you got the silver alert was issued at two forty-three. It was put in the system uh at two forty-three, uh it set off an alarm and the, the, you know, individuals. Returned safely. I know that we all drive around and we see the silver alerts on I five or whatever for hours sometimes and then I'll find them for days. As this moves up and down I five, which it currently is, you're, you will see those times drastically diminish because of the way the system works. Uh, this was a child abduction that happened in Georgia. Um, twelve thirty-three, the amber alert was issued. They um conducted a search with the flock system. This was different because they didn't have a vehicle. So from within thirty minutes, they were able to locate the suspect vehicle on the camera system. Put it in the system and then by five oh three, they arrested the suspect and the baby was right there. So I think that's the end of the slideshow. I'm sure there's probably some questions, isn't there, unless you've already asked them all. Well, if you think as many as you give us. Um, currently, right now, we have an Esqol, an Esqol grant, um that will cover four cameras. Um, we're working with Flock to get them strategically placed in the best possible spots. In all reality, as time moves on, we would want to add more so that you get the benefit of in-town and tracking out. So we'll probably put interiors and exteriors of the town, the city where they come and go, so we have access to that. Um, as time moves forward and we can purchase them, we'll add some like on, you know, first and Yelm and then down in like the business districts where we can have a better, you know.
Cars are racing up and down that.
Well, we don't, it doesn't do that. It can't record that. Only pictures of stolen vehicles and, you know, bad things, not traffic enforcement.
The cost again for, for camera and then the maintenance cost.
So that's the awesome thing about Flock. The cameras are three thousand dollars a year. Uh, there's no maintenance cost. It's, that's the price. They cover all the maintenance. They handle all the I T work. Um, they, they put them in, they install them, they do all the permitting and everything. So we pay three thousand. That covers the camera for the service that you get.
Quick question on, just because a lot of these cameras that have surveillance or have things, you know, they have to say things like. You are being recorded. You are, I mean, is there like a, a requirement to post? There's a camera here.
Yeah, okay, cool. You'll see the ones where it says like, you know, speed sign ahead or speed, you know, that's different because you're actually writing somebody a ticket off. But for Flock, you don't have that. I would imagine we'll do something and write it up and put it out. So citizens know what we are doing.
I'd be curious about that business integration.
Yeah, that, that. Flock has literally said that um they have had so, they, that's how it started was just. Uh, HOAs and businesses. That's, that's how this whole program started and then the law enforcement picked it up. Um, they have, most of the big cities, um, they have a ton of businesses that actually own the camera. And they have the ser- and they pay for the service and it just gets routed right to the law enforcement. And anybody can do that, even after we set this up, anybody can put one of those up.
So if a community or H O A, they're like, we just wanna, you know, back in the day, it was a neighborhood watch. And I was like, hey, we wanna purchase a flock and give access to the police department and say, hey, just so you can keep an eye on this area. That could be a thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's kinda how, that was exactly how it was designed originally. The thing about the flock system is you can allow people to slouser and agencies to see it or not. Around here with Thurston County and all of us, we have agreed because it makes no sense not to share the data. And that's the awesome thing is if we share our data, if we are looking for somebody and they go through Lakewood, we'll know, they'll, they will get the hit in Lakewood and they will stop them. That happened down at Chaelis. Uh, they had a shooting suspect and I don't remember where he's from. But I think it was up north and he made it down here and they, and he, he drove through town and they got him on the camera in Centroy, so they stopped him. So. Um, sharing the data is probably one of the most important things for the system because it just puts our eyes across the state now. Instead of just right here in the town, in the city. More questions for me?
All right, we got a, um, agenda for the, a draft agenda for the council retreat on twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Of this month in Klaske, New Oregon. It's an hour and a half or so, a little bit more of the drive time. Uh, we'll be, staff will get there on Thursday. We'll do a um management retreat. And then they will be staying over on Friday to give a portion of their um. Other time to the city council and to answer questions and give presentations. Uh, some of the topics include the general government slash executive committee discussion. If you wanna bring that back, what that could look like. Uh, six hundred forty acres discussion, what the statuses of that, and we should be able to have our um. Our um. What's it, or thank you, Todd, um, our R I P for that back by then. And we'll be able to discuss it a little bit more in detail. Um, the E I C slash library slash museum. Um, update, what's going on with those. Heptact conservation plan, we'll discuss that even more and some of the options that council might want to pursue. Uh, Mill Road property discussion, we, we have that property purchase. We um, we have parks committee that has taken a look at it, advisory committee. I believe we'll have some um options at that point to consider. Uh, centennial updates, this year is obviously our hundred-year anniversary and um. We'll, we'll be discussing some of the events planned for that. So council is very aware and updated on all those activities. On Saturday, we'll be doing some strategic long tar, long-range planning, goal-setting, discussing some committees. I'm gonna talk about. Um, and also the homelessness committee, if we're gonna, um, that was one of the. Items that council members wanted to see. Uh, we'll do a team building event and uh possible property acquisitions. Um, yeah. Any questions, any folks wanna add?
Well, you said council arrived twelve thirty, you know, was that, let me, we'd be there at twelve?
Yep, be there at twelve o'clock.
And then from there, do you work on a team, all that stuff?
Yeah, correct. From the twelve to three is the council will arrive, they'll want food, um, then. Management team one-on-one presentations from each um department.
Another question is, how many council members will be there Saturday? I'll be on Saturday.
That will be there as of now.
I have no reason not to be.
Everyone else will be there besides the two of us. Um, someone lets me know.
I'm just gonna make all the decisions without you guys.
Finding out his case.
You said, uh, like for hap- for the H C P discussion, I see it as fifteen minutes.
If we need more time, absolutely.
I'll go pretty much. And then the, the Mill Road property, that's the one by Mill Pond that which that had, that has the small thing.
Is there anything on here that we've missed? This has been from what we've seen over the past few months, what councils suggested and um some of the topics that they've. Wanted to discuss. And so if there's anything that I missed or we missed, let me know. We'll be sure to add it and discuss it.
Is there anything about the why we need to still talk about?
Yep, I think those will be on the um, like kind of the long-range planning, uh, long range slash short range. Right.
Uh, and this is more for Director Colt. Uh, when we talk about the E I C. The new concept drawings, nothing will be available at that by that time, correct?
There may some, be some very basic ones, but they want, but I'll have the old fine, some of the new proposed ideas.
Oh, I, I just wanted to know what would be available for you.
Any else council wants to add to it?
Not a lot of it's happening on Friday because I was worried that I was gonna miss out.
Yep, well, it's a couple council members missing on that day. We tried to pack as much as we could on there. Um, for that, for your guys' consideration.
Thank you.
Absolutely. There's nothing else?
Should we talk about the, the per diem request you can mention?
Yeah, Kathy will go ahead and reach, if she hasn't already, she'll send out corps. Um, we'll pass these out. You can fill them out for reimbursements and all that stuff. But other than that, everything should be arranged and good to go.
So per diem for your meals. Uh, when you get there Friday, your meal will be provided. We're gonna have it brought in. But then there's Friday night dinner and then Saturday morning breakfast for those that aren't staying. Those that are staying, there's breakfast at the hotel, but you also get a per diem for lunch. If you're staying through the end of the day, you'll get a per diem for lunch.
Try to carpool if you can, but there's uh reimbursements for that too.
So we'll be at this one location the whole time.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, it's a pretty small town. Um, we might walk to like lunch or dinner or something like that, but that's about it.
How did you guys pick this place?
We went last year, the management team went last year. And um, it actually, it actually worked really well for us. It's uh, they're very accommodating at the hotel. Um, the, the cost for the hotel room, you really can't beat it. Um, and we just walked right across the street for dinner and it was just nice. It was just, it worked well.
Also, the cost for the meeting room, the meeting rooms are very expensive. They, a lot of them have minimum food requirements that are huge. Um, they're literally charging us fifty dollars each day. So, yeah, the price is amazing.
And we're helping a small community out by. You know, spending a little bit of money in their community.
Kathy's done a lot of uh work on this, um, setting all this up, so thank you, Kathy, for all that. Any other questions on that? Moving on to the mayor's board? Really, I have is some council committee updates, uh, with Stephanie covers, customer, Kingizer coming up. Um, she's replacing Councilmember Smith on, on her committees for the time being. Uh, that's part of the discussion at our retreat. I don't have making a lot of changes or anything, but if there is some that would accommodate someone's schedule a little bit more, we can go ahead and take a look at it at this point. Um, but for as it is now, she will be on the same committees Councilmember Smith was, including public safety and finance. However, the public safety committee will be now chaired by Councilmember Hess, vice chair with Councilmember Wood. The finance committee would be chaired by Councilmember Kaminsky and vice chaired by Councilmember Palmer. Other than that, we haven't really touched anything else. Um, because our Kingizer will be uh at the southeast Thurston Fire Authority liaison for current. Apparently, um, if someone wants to change that, we can discuss that afterwards, but this is how it is for the time being. Um, there could be some adjustments after the city uh council retreat, but after, other than that, that's all I've got for you right now. Any questions or anything on that?
Are you still on public safety?
You are? Well, no, were you, you were currently on public safety? Public services, yes, you're still on. And yes, public or finance committee, you're still on and you're now the chair of that committee. And then so basically for, for those that are new, if you're a chair of a committee, you will be responsible for um helping set up that meeting, uh, helping to run it. Um, although the staffers will likely have the agenda and um be ready to go. If you wanna add something, um, feel free to communicate with that person. Um, and then responsible for uh reporting back to the committee for the, to the council on uh city council meetings. What was said, someone wants to fill, and that's for efficiency of time for these meetings. If someone, another council member wants to add to it. Um, more, you're more than welcome to do that, but primarily that's what that chair will be doing. Any questions on any of that? Thank you.
Maybe anything finishes? No, no, Hess.
Yes, um, just wanna share that, uh, my shared post from. Who is Free Tacoma and uh there seems to be some interest in trying to do the same thing within the city of Yelm. Uh, and I think one of the individuals was, is involved with Bountiful Families. Is that the main organization that does? So I just want to let you know that uh I think we may not see it this year, but maybe next year we might actually start seeing uh. The uh development of the Food is Free. One of the things that was asked uh by another community member was. Uh, or they stated that this would be great to have at the farmer's market. My reply to them was, I don't wanna compete with those that are. Doing a business. So we, you know, that is not my intention of going to the farmer's market with a food is free table. It's. Within the neighborhoods that people will know about. So that's all I have to say in reference to that.
Any else? All right, I need your, thanks everybody.